Meeting of the Shreveport City Council is now called a order. Councilman Green will give the invocation and Councilman Flory will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Lord, for this day and thank you for this opportunity, another opportunity, to do some good. And we love you today, we praise you today. Whatever we do, we ask that you would enable us to do it in a Christ-like manner. Thank you for this time of the season and we ask that you would just cover people and bless them and let them know that you are the reason for the season. Thank you for what you've done. We're going to praise you in advance for what you're getting ready to do, it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilman Brown.
President.
Councilwoman Fuller.
Here.
Councilwoman Mepes.
Present.
Councilman Butcher.
Here.
Councilman Flory.
Here.
Councilman Green.
I'm here.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the Administrative Conference of December 9th and the City Council meeting of December 10th? Please vote.
The motion carries with six, one out of chamber.
Does any council member have any awards, recognitions, or distinguished guests?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Butcher.
I would like to recognize, this is on our agenda, actually, do we need to suspend the rules and move this up? Would that be proper?
Yes.
So, I want to suspend the rules for Resolution 161. And it's in regards to Michael Jenkins, back on November the 27th, the day before Thanksgiving, there was, in the morning, there was a house fire over in the Highland area of town. And Mr. Jenkins selflessly helped Corporal Tina Morris rescue an elderly lady from the building. And there's...
Yes, point of war, we need to suspend the rules.
Okay.
Yeah, Councilman Butcher has moved...
I second.
Councilman Green has seconded. Please vote.
Thank you, sir. Sorry. So, anyway...
Motion carries with six.
We just felt like it was the right thing to do, to recognize Mr. Jenkins for his heroic act. You know, we hear a lot about how people don't help each other. I can say one thing about the people of Shreveport, they are very helpful to each other and I think we all have each other's back. So, I'd like to recognize Mr. Jenkins and let the clerk read the resolution.
Do you want him to come up?
Yeah, Mr. Jenkins, if you're here, would you come up?
He's here with his family.
Yeah, bring your family as well. We're going to let the clerk read the resolution and then you can say a little something and then we'll get some pictures.
Yes.
This is a resolution to recognize Michael Jenkins for his heroism in saving a citizen from a burning house and otherwise provided with respect thereto by Councilmen Nicholson and Butcher. Whereas Michael Jenkins, a concerned citizen, helped assist the Shreveport Police and Fire Departments in a house fire in the Highland area neighborhood on Wednesday, November the 27th, 2019. And whereas Michael Jenkins noticed fire, smoke, and flames from the neighbor's house and called 911. When Police Corporal Ernestine Tina Morris arrived on the scene, Mr. Jenkins told her an elderly female is trapped in the house. And whereas Michael Jenkins boosted Corporal Morris into the second-floor window of the residence, she found the elderly female and he helped her to safely exit the burning building. And whereas the fire was so intense, it took the efforts of 13 fire units, approximately 35 firefighters, one hour and 35 minutes to control and extinguish the blaze. And whereas because of Michael Jenkins' call to 911 and his assistance in the rescue, no citizen was injured during this major fire incident. Now therefore, being resolved by the City Council of the City of Shreveport in due legal and regular session convened, that the Shreveport City Council recognizes Michael Jenkins for his actions, which helped rescue a citizen from a burning house. Being further resolved, that this resolution shall be executed in duplicate originals, with one original presented to Michael Jenkins and the other resolution filed in perpetuity in the office of the Clerk of Council for the City of Shreveport. And the resolution has been signed by all council members. Mr. Chairman, I think that the Fire Department may also have a presentation.
Well, that's what I was going to ask Chief Olmerton to come up if he would, too.
Mr. Councilman...
Well, he's coming. Let's adopt this resolution so you can join them.
Okay. I'll make a motion to adopt.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Butcher, seconded by Councilman Green. Please vote. Motion carries with six, one absent.
Councilmembers, Mayor. I'd like to read a document to you today on behalf of the Shreveport Fire Department. This certifies the Mayor of Fire Chief of City of Shreveport has awarded Citizen Law of Saving Award to Michael Jenkins for exceptional heroism demonstrated on Wednesday, November 27th, 2019, while on the scene of a two-story house fire in the 1100 block of College Street. Mr. Michael Jenkins advised SPD Corporal Tina Morris that a female was still inside the home on the second floor. Without hesitation, Mr. Jenkins and Corporal Morris entered the smoke-filled house and made a decision that will forever change the life of another. Mr. Jenkins, with the assistance of Corporal Morris, you unselfishly risked your life to save the life of another person. Your actions made a difference and saved the life of your fellow citizen. Given out of hand, the City of Shreveport, Louisiana, 10th day of December 2019, signed by myself and the Honorable Mayor Adrian Perkins. We have a Fire Department challenge coin that we save for special events like this. This coin reflects our department and what we put in community courage, serve them with honor, integrity, and respect. And that's exactly what you did that day. You put our community ahead of your own protection. And we appreciate what you did. So, I want to give you that also. It's the best message.
I just wanted to say thank you to the council board, to the Fire Department as well, and to the Shreveport Police Department and you too as well. Mr. Perkins, thank you all for giving me this opportunity to come up. As I told everyone before, I never did it for credit and heroism. I did it because as us, as citizens, the best way for us to grow is water each other and help each other. You never know when you may need help. And I looked at it seeing as in, yeah, I may be 20 now and I may be physically fit to help someone today, but you never know what your life may hold for the rest of the day. Maybe the next day I might have needed someone to help me get out of a fire. And I didn't, you know... I had a lot of people to look at me and tell me, you know, they said that there was a heroic act. And I tell a lot of people to define heroism. You know, we say that heroism is really something that we thrive at when we're scared and we hop in and take charge because we're trying to save those who aren't safe, but are we really safe, ever? We look around and we always wonder because we're inside of the confined walls of our homes that we're safe when we're really not. We never know what's out there. We look up every single day and don't know what's out across the million miles of what we consider as space. That's not safe. Asteroids could hit us any day and time. A straight bullet can hit a house any day and time. So, what I looked at and what I did wasn't an act of heroism or bravery. It was an act of the right thing to do because that's, you know, what we're supposed to do as citizens. As brothers and sisters in Christ and brothers and sisters in citizens of Shreveport, Louisiana, and America, we're all supposed to be a family and we're all supposed to be one. And under one nation, we're supposed to stand because if it's one nation, we're going to fall together, so we might as well stand together. So, I look at you all and I thank you. You're really heroic. You all, you all, you know, don't you need any more than that? And don't pat me on the back. You guys should pat yourselves on the back because you risk your life each and every single day. That was a one-time thing for me, but you wake up and you have a family that you risked your life for because there's not a guarantee that you're going to go back home tonight. But when you put on that uniform, you know the risk and you're courageous. You're the real brave one and I thank you all.
Do I need to come arrange y'all for this photo? Because I will.
All right.
Let's get posed up, please.
Want me to do it? Want me to do it?
One, two, three.
Man, that's hard. How do you even know it?
Thank you all.
Michael Jenkins.
Michael Jenkins.
Hey, Michael, before you go...
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Is it all right? Michael, before you go, I'd just like to say, God bless you, man, and I also like to do what I normally do. If you come by the council chamber upstairs on the fourth floor, I'll have a gift card for you to my favorite restaurant. Come after lunch. I'm old, I get up late, so... Come after lunch and I'll have it for you. Yes, sir. God bless you, man.
Thank you so much. Does any other member have an award, recognition, or distinguished guest?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Green. Counselor, excuse me.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I don't have a guess or any recognition, but I do want to express my appreciation to my council colleagues, the mayor, for coming by the services of the late civil rights icon, Dr. C.O. Simkins, on last weekend. I especially want to thank the Shreveport Police and the Shreveport Fire Department for their service during that time. Their presence, your presence, made that celebration complete in the fact that this was a national pioneer in the civil rights movement. And for you to take time to come and partake of that celebration event, the family was grateful and I wanted to express that to you. Mayor, thank you for your proclamation and remarks as well. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman Flory. Councilman Green.
I'd like to bring up Terrence Green. Terrence. Mr. Chair, Terrence is going to give his report now. He's in some kind of discomfort, pain, and I just want him to go and give his report so that he could go back home and get some rest.
Mr. Green, welcome back. I'm glad to see you here.
Thank you. All right. You guys have anything for me? I have nothing. You have anything?
Just thank Mr. Harris for having your back while you're out. We missed you.
Oh, he took care of you.
We had your back.
Glad you're back.
Glad you were coming. You can go home and rest.
Merry Christmas.
Watch Madlock.
Mayor Perkins, do you have any awards, recognitions, or distinguished guests?
I do. First off, I just want to say happy holidays to everybody before I begin my remarks. For those in the audience and those that are tuning in, I hope everybody have a very blessed holiday season. I want to jump into it. We have some very, very good news that we received this week. I'm pleased to announce that Officer Sheterry Payne's name was approved to be added to the National Law Enforcement Memorial in Washington, D.C. We will also add her name to our local memorial on the riverfront. As you know, she was killed at the start of the year and I'm glad to see her get this recognition and honor. This will be the last council meeting for two of our directors. Our HR Director, Angelita Jackson, who we had a nice retirement party for today, surprise retirement party, eh? And Finance Director Charles Madden will both be retiring at the end of this month. I would like to recognize Mrs. Jackson for 21 years of service and Mr. Madden for 29 years of service to the City of Shreveport. Thank you both. I want to encourage everyone to support the Independence Bowl, a game. It's at 3:00 PM on Thursday, December 26th. By attending or watching online on ESPN, the matchup between Louisiana Tech and the University of Miami will be a great event for our city and an awesome opportunity for us to market all the wonderful things we have going on here, so please be sure to check out the commercials that will air on ESPN during the game. Last week, I announced the formation of the new Shreveport Commission on Race, to which we have gotten a great response, even more than we anticipated. Those still interested in being a part of turning the racial tide in our city can find the application online at www.shreveportla.gov and we will have applications open through January 10th. Today, I have Laura Alderman, the Executive Director of Step Forward, as my special guest. I had the opportunity to join Laura and many other community leaders last week in signing a resolution to prioritize early childhood education. She will now come and speak more about the resolution that was sent to council members for review. Ms. Alderman.
Thank you, Mayor Perkins, Chairman Bowman, and members of the council. Thank you for the chance to be here. With me today is Kristy Gustafson, CEO of the Community Foundation. So, I'd just like to give you a little explanation about the process for this resolution and then we're going to give you all an opportunity to join the effort and the action to improve these outcomes. So, for the first time ever, all sectors in our community have joined together to accomplish a common vision, to achieve school readiness for all children in Northwest Louisiana. This fall, a group of representatives from state and local government, higher education, business, and healthcare sectors met for the Early Childhood Policy Summit, a short course on the impact of early childhood experiences on both children and the community. They followed the example of our community's faith leaders whose concern began this community-wide conversation. They learned that many children are starting school already behind, in fact, 59% in the fall of 2018. And if we apply that percentage to those younger than kindergarten, we know that more than 17,000 Northwest Louisiana children are at risk of following suit. This community crisis represents the beginning of the academic achievement gap that most often persists and widens as children get older, evolving into employment and income gaps later in life. Yet we know this lack of school readiness is not due to a lack of ability, but rather to a lack of access. Access to the essential experiences and resources that allow young children to reach their potential during this brief but critical window of early brain development in the first five years of life. This lack of access is a preventable tragedy. I know you will agree that every child in Northwest Louisiana deserves the opportunity to start school ready for success. We are here today because many community leaders share this belief and have come together to change the status quo. They have demonstrated this commitment through the public signing of a resolution to improve school readiness. This is their commitment to action, the strategies they agreed on unanimously included, to develop a community message on early brain development and to promote quality and affordable childcare. The development and implementation of their strategic action plans, and hopefully yours as well, will begin in January 2020. Central to this effort are our media partners. You are the voice of our children. Without your help, their needs will not be heard and solutions to the problem will never be known by those who could make a difference. You also serve as a measure of accountability for the commitment made today, for the work has only just begun and we are so grateful for your partnership and we ask for your long-term commitment to disseminating this work. Serving as honorary hosts of the summit were Bossier City Mayor Low Walker, Shreveport Mayor Adrian Perkins, Bossier Parish Superintendent Mitch Downey, and Caddo Parish Superintendent Lamar Gory. We are here today to give you, our city's leaders, the opportunity to be a part of this important effort by adding your signature to the resolution. And then we invite you for a photo opportunity and if you want to issue a friendly challenge to the Bossier City Council to follow suit, feel free and we'll pass along your message. So, we have, I'm going to invite Kristy to make a few comments if she'd like to, but I want to show you the giant-sized copy. Laura only travels with really large papers. But the resolution, and we invite each of you to consider adding your signatures to it.
All I'll say is I've been so happy to be a part of this with Step Forward and the Community Foundation and really thank all of you for caring about the kids of our community and particularly for Councilwoman Fuller's presence at the summit as well as the mayor and the mayor's office and his staff. So, thank y'all so much and we've got great things coming up next year.
So, this is your opportunity. Who wants to be first?
Unless y'all don't support early childhood education. I already took my picture.
Do I need to? I thought by now y'all have figured out how this works. Let's integrate. Do we have courage to do a picture too?
Of course, we're going to take a picture. Okay, but are you going to get in it?
Yeah, we're going to take a picture.
So, I'm not sure how we can just like...
You can go back there.
Should we prop it in front? That's fine, yeah, that's fine.
Well, you put it up in front of the...
Wait, we put it in front of the...
In front of the...
All right.
My idea, maybe I need, maybe I need to...
Say cheese.
Cheese. It's sad.
All right. Thank you.
That's why I asked you to agree. He said, "You're definitely better than hers." I had to agree. Now...
I'll do my regular stuff.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you all. Santa Claus at the North Pole. Clark Clement Moore, 1848. Audience participate. When I raise my left arm, I want the last word or two. 'Twas the night for Christmas and all through the house, not a creature was stirring, not even a... The stockings were hung by the chimney with care in hopes that St. Nicholas soon would be... The children were nestled all snug in their beds while visions of sugarplums danced in their... And Mama in her kerchief and I, my cap, had just settled in for a long winter's... Went out on the lawn. There arose such a clatter, I sprang from the bed to see what was the... Away to the window I flew like a flash, tore open the shutter and threw up the... The moon on the breast of the new fallen snow gave a luster of midday to objects... When what, to my wondering, I should appear, but a miniature sleigh with eight tiny... With a little old driver so lively and quick, that I knew in a moment it must be... More rapid than eagles, his courses they came. And he whistled and shouted and called them bye. Now dasher and dancer and prancer and vixen, on Comet on Cupid on Donder and... To the top of the porch, to the top of the wall, now dash away, dash away, dash away, as dry leaves that before the wild hurricane fly. When they meet with an obstacle and mount to the... So up to the housetop, his courses they flew with a sleigh full of toys, and St. Nicholas... Then in a twinkling, I heard on the roof, the prancing and pawing of each little... As he was dressed all in fur, from his head to his foot, and his clothes were all tarnished with ashes and... A bundle of toys he had flung on his back, and he looked like a peddler just opening his... His eyes, how they twinkled, his dimples, how merry! His cheeks were like roses, his nose like... His droll little mouth was drawn up like a bow and the beard of his chin was as white as the... The stump of a pipe he held tight in his teeth. And the smoke it encircled his head like a... Wreath. You crack me up. He had a broad face and a little round belly that shook when he laughed like a bowl full of... He was chubby and plump, a right jolly old elf. And I laughed when I saw him in spite of... He spoke not a word, but went straight to his work. And he filled all the stockings and he turned with a jerk. And laying a finger aside of his nose and giving a nod up the chimney, he... Arose. He sprang to his sleigh, to his team gave a whistle and away they all flew like the down of a thistle. But I heard him exclaim ere he drove out of sight. Happy Christmas to all and to all a... Thank you. If that didn't get you in the holiday spirit, I'm not quite sure what would.
Lastly, Mr. Chairman, you all know that the federal government placed our city under a federal consent decree in 2014 to fix our sewer system. This requires us to fix all defects in our system and any we find along the way during this process. We realize this work would cost more than originally anticipated, now upwards of $1 billion. That is why when I came into office, my first directive to our city engineer was to change the program manager for the consent decree. And the new program manager, Burns and McDonnell, delved deeper into the program and assessed the matter. I promised we would have them come back to council before the end of the year with their findings. As we anticipated, the current rate structure will not support the terms of the consent decree. For example, our Phase 1, that was negotiated in that 2014 consent decree, we spent over $200 million and have not completed what was required for Phase 1 alone. At this time, I would like to have Burns and McDonnell come forward with their presentation.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the council. My name is Ron Coker. I'm at Burns and McDonnell. Thank you for having me back. I was last here in July. I know Patrick Clifford gave a brief update to you in October. I'll cover the first half of this presentation and then John Pruce will come up and present as well. I know there was a clicker here somewhere. I'm not sure. Does that look like it?
Yes.
Okay, I wish I would have gone way after the reading of the night before Christmas because that feels like such a pleasant thing and now I feel like I'm presenting something that's... Wastewater is not very pleasant, that's for sure, even when we're talking about it in this scenario. So, let's talk a little bit about what we're going to present to you today. We're going to talk a little bit about the consent decree itself and the risk exposure to the city associated with that. We want to give you a status update on the phases that have already happened and the phases that are still to come. We want to talk about... We want to talk about some issues related to the hydraulic model and how that affects what you've done and where you're headed. And then also about the financial model and really the thing that I think as elected officials that you'll find, really the driver in this is can we even afford to do what this consent decree requires us to do? So we'll talk a little bit about that. I'll go fairly quickly. Please ask questions as I go if you have them and I'll try and stop and make sure we adequately address those.
Could you give us your title?
Absolutely, sir. My name is Ron Coker. I'm Senior Vice President with Burns McDonnell. I run the company's water and wastewater practice.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry for not doing that originally. First, let's start with this overview. We talk about this each time we come back to you, just to remind you, this is a federal consent decree. This is a result of a settlement between DOJ, EPA, and the city of Shreveport. So it's not something that, it's not something that the city, I think, is choosing to do. This is the result of, this is the result of a settlement of a lawsuit between, for violations of the Clean Water Act as imposed by DOJ and EPA. So it's a.
This would include 625,000 cash settlement from the city of Shreveport to get this decree. Is that correct?
I believe there was a penalty associated with.
There was a penalty.
That's correct. I'm not sure.
625,000.
Yes.
Is that correct, ma'am?
That's correct.
I won't cover every element of the consent decree, but I will talk about the large elements here. So the first is that you're required to analyze your entire collection system and fix all defects. I've got underlined under "all." That is a very stringent requirement. What you're really trying to do in a consent decree related to your wastewater system is prevent overflows out of your system. So overflows can occur when your system fills up with rainwater, as an example. If you have ways for that rainwater to get in your system and fill it up so that you no longer have the capacity. But when you're investigating your system, often every defect is not necessarily a defect that's related to a sanitary sewer overflow. So you have a very stringent requirement in your consent decree related to your repairs. You have to do that in the first nine years of the program. You have to reassess Phases One, Two, and Three. So there's five phases in total. You have to reassess Phases One, Two, and Three again between eight and 12 years and then address any new defects that you found in the system. You have to analyze your system and construct additional conveyance or capacity to make sure that your system doesn't overflow. So in other words, if you fix all of your system, if it still overflows, you have to, you have to build capacity into your system to prevent that overflow from occurring. And then finally, you have to implement a, what we call a C-MOM or Capacity Management Operations and Maintenance Program within year one of the program. That's really the regulatory agencies driving you to try and get you to maintain your system in a manner that helps prevent overflows as well. So this is all part of the consent decree that you signed previously. And there are many more elements of this consent decree as well and intermediate deadlines associated with the two. These are just the highlights for purposes of time. In that consent decree, you have stipulated penalties that are attached to each submittal or each requirement, deadline requirement as you go through. Those submittals apply when you have SSOs. They also apply to all of the construction deadlines. So you can see it's a graduated scale and it applies to each submittal or each deadline within the consent decree. So in other words, you don't just have one set of penalties that apply for the whole thing. They apply to every element of the consent decree that you have to comply with. Okay, and here is the challenge. And this is, I know Councilman Nicholson and Chairman Bowman, when they sat through the selections or the interviews, when we interviewed for the job, this is one of the things that we talked about right off the bat was we have a concern when we came to Shreveport that what you had intended to pay for, what you had intended to construct as part of this consent decree was $350 million of improvements. That's shown in blue on that chart. What you forecast to construct or what you're forecasting the repairs to that system now that you've investigated the system and you've started through the repair process is much higher. It's well over a billion dollars in that process. What you're seeing here represents $1.3 billion. That's simply CDM's final estimate of 1.1 billion. And we applied a contingency factor based on where we saw overruns occur in early phases of the program. So the reality is, is there's still a range attached to the overall cost of the program. You still are investigating Phase Five areas. You don't know exactly what the repair requirements are still. But from a big picture standpoint, it's well above what you intended to pay for. And that can be both good from a standpoint of saying we've invested more into our system to extend the life of that system and make it better. But it can also be bad because if it becomes so burdensome cost-wise to the community, it really puts you in a position where you can't be sustainable in what you're doing. And the best thing you can do for clean water and for the environment in the long run is to have a sustainable utility that's able to treat and discharge clean water every day as part of it. So if you're spending all of your money trying to fix leaks into your system, it leads you no money to address the operation of your utility. So we'll talk about the cost and the affordability associated with this as we go further into the presentation. Real quickly, here's the status of the phases. So remember, there are five phases. Phase One was completed a few years ago. It was comprised of 30 projects. All 30 are functionally complete. Currently, 24 have reached final completion. So this is, these projects lasted much longer than you anticipated. You did much more work than you anticipated in those early phases. So I've got here the status at transition and the current status. So I have this in this report so that you can see when we took over the program in early September, or the first of September from CDM, that's really where we're kind of drawing the line of transition so that you can see what's happened since we came on board this fall. So four more of those projects reached final completion since the transition date. The construction cost forecast for this phase is $185 million. The consent decree deadline was November 12th of 2017. And the city's risk exposure, so that exposure to those stipulated penalties that we talked about for Phase One, based on a functional completion date. So the reason I say that is your consent decree requires the projects or the phase just to be complete. There is no definition of what complete is. Typically, in a consent decree, you would draw that line as when is it operating as it intended to be operated, right? When can I use that piece of infrastructure as part of it? So the city has defined that as functional complete. And I know they've been in conversations with EPA about that definition and have presented that to EPA. So that's where we're drawing the line to try and give you some sense of exposure thus far. So based on a functional completion date, the Phase One projects were 12 months beyond the consent decree deadline. So the city is exposed to potential stipulated penalties associated with that phase. That doesn't mean EPA will enforce those penalties. It simply means based on the consent decree, that's an exposure that the city does have. There was a time extension request to EPA. I don't think the city has received any word back on that time extension. And then really one of the things that we've discovered this past fall and that's really dominated the time, our time in the past few months, is related to the results of Phase One. And I know this was mentioned a bit at a previous infrastructure meeting. Construction flow monitoring occurred in 2019. So what that means is you went back into the system that you'd already repaired in Phase One. You took flow measurements in that system again through the rainy season. And then you looked for and you used a hydraulic modeling often in many cases to evaluate how effective were those repairs. Your target was to try and remove about 40% of the inflow and infiltration into that basin. What those results would tell you is you achieved about half of that target. So that's significant because your consent decree doesn't say, once you do this, that's good, you're done. Your consent decree says you've got to eliminate overflows out of the system. So if you weren't able to remove enough inflow and infiltration out of your system with the money that you spent already, it's likely that you would have to go back into that basin to spend more money to try and make sure you don't have an overflow out of that system. So that's a big concern and we'll talk about that with hydraulic model as well in more detail as we go forward. Phase Two?
Mr. Cook, let me.
Yes, sir.
Let me interject a question, emphasize that point for the public. Phase One is complete and has been tested. We spent $185 million on that work. Is that right?
I believe that, is that the correct number? Yes, I believe that's the correct number.
And the testing that has been done since that work was completed shows that we did not achieve the objectives of that work that we expected based on modeling on the front end.
Correct.
So we spent $185 million and still have not fixed the problem.
Well, I think what, yes, that is correct. That is correct. I think one thing to think about that, and we'll talk about that when we get to the discussion on the model, is the data is still very preliminary. And as we dug into the model deeper, we realized that your model's really not correlating well with your system. So before we come back and say, in more of a final position, that yes, you indeed did not achieve it, I think there's work to do in the model to make sure that those results can be verified as such. And I think that'll make a little more sense when we get into the model section of the presentation.
Thank you.
Yep, other questions?
Please.
Yes, sir.
Are you going to provide the council a copy of what you're showing us?
Well, I'd certainly leave that up to the administration. It's definitely something we will provide to the city.
So that's a note?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It will be forwarded to the council.
Jumped here too far. Sorry, we switched screens here. So status of Phase Two. So there are 17 projects in Phase Two. So this was the phase, if you remember, that as we were making the transition, you extended, or CDM's contract was extended through the summer to try and help get those projects to functional completion before CDM left since they had been so involved in those projects all along. At the status of transition, only three were functionally complete. Several were close. So since the transition, 12 are now functionally complete and four have reached final completion. We expect in the first quarter of 2020 that all will be functionally complete. The construction cost forecast for this phase is $114 million. The consent decree deadline is May 12th of 2019 or was May 12th of 2019. So based on the functional completion date of what we're expecting for these projects, you'll miss the consent decree date by about nine months, which will also expose the city to stipulated penalties or potential stipulated penalties. As part of it, there was again a time extension made for this phase of the work that was based on really the excessive rainfall that you had in 2019, or 2019 that EPA has yet to respond to as well. Any questions related to this phase? So this fall, our team has really shifted when we came on board to try and finish this set of projects as we've gone through the transition of the program. So I know that citizen issues and citizen complaints were a big concern of the council and of the city as a whole related, and I think a lot of them were felt in this phase of the project in particular. So this is a big challenge. And you know, one of the challenges I think you have in Phase Two and probably extends back to Phase One is you didn't have a lot of controls built into the specifications that one motivated the contractors to close that project out and really controlled how much was put under construction at any one time, right? That's not necessarily the fault of the contractors. I think they were way too aggressive of a schedule placed on those contractors as well to get the work done. But this is an area that we want to work towards and improve as we move forward so that as you start construction in a neighborhood or an area, you're not tearing up the whole area early and then you have all of these lingering repair efforts that go on for the duration of the program, right? So we've certainly addressed that as we think as we go into Phase Three. But when we started or at the point of transition, we had 450 open issues related to construction related complaints or issues or problems. We've put in place, and I think we talked a little bit with Drayden the last time or the time before we were here, we've put in place an active, real-time system to monitor and track those calls. I've sat with the folks that are responding to citizens. I'm very impressed with the work they do. And today, we have about 163 open issues. So while 163 open issues is not acceptable, I feel very positive that we've made drastic improvement in the last three and a half months. And I think we've got a system in place that will better address this as we go forward as well. And remember, that doesn't mean that out of 451, there's still 163 open. What that means is that's a real time, it's a real time number. It's changing every day, up or down. This is just the active, this is just the active calls that we're working on. Okay, Phase Three. So Phase Three had already been designed when we came on board and was moving towards construction. There are 14 projects in this phase. When we took over in the first of September, one had finished design and one was under construction. That project was actually started earlier in a previous phase. So the remainder of the projects hadn't yet reached final design, but they were close. So since we've taken over all 14 or have reached final design and you still have a single project under construction, the forecast for this phase is $140 million and the consent decree deadline is November 13th. So one of the first things that we did when we came into this phase, because this is the phase that was getting ready to bid, was we wanted to add those controls to the contract. We wanted to look through your specifications and see where we could make improvements in the specifications, both for the end product that the city would receive as well as the process by which you would go through construction and delivery of this project. So in total, we made more than 450 recommendations to the city's front end and standard specifications. And many of those were incorporated into these design packages. We also talked to the city about the schedule. So what you see in the top is the proposed schedule by CDM or their final proposed schedule by CDM. So for Phase Three, and remember, we're talking about $140 million of construction. So for Phase Three, you would bid all of those projects concurrently in about a four month time period and then you would construct them all concurrently in a 12-month time period. That's just not realistic for that much work to occur. Remember, your consent decree when you negotiated, it was much smaller in scale. Those scheduled durations were much more realistic. But as you've increased your spending or the number of repairs you're making, those original schedules just aren't achievable for the amount of construction that you're doing now. So we went back and looked at what you've actually achieved in Phase One and Phase Two. And what you see in light green is the likely schedule overrun that you would have had. In other words, this is not going to be a 12-month construction project. This is going to be a 24- to 30-month construction project. So we looked at where that would line up with the consent decree. And then we recommended the city, rather than go down that same path of having an unachievable goal and then always be reactive, that instead we slow down, that we address the problems in the specifications, that's what you see, the gap and the difference between the two red bars, that we spread the bidding across a longer period of time so that contractors knew whether they were successful before they bid the next one. I believe we had no more than two bidding at any one time. And then to give them a realistic construction schedule with a more stringent liquidated damage at the back end of that contract to try and force closure of that contract. So the city agreed. I think it's a better approach and you get better value. You do expose yourself to some additional stipulated penalties through that process, but the thought is you're going to get better bids and you're going to get better product and better pricing by having more realistic goals and requirements for the contractors. So this is the path we were headed down this fall. We did have a meeting with the construction community. We had over 70 participants in this meeting. We laid out the expected schedule and projects. This is something that we do in many of the programs that we manage to try and give both the design and construction community some sense of what's coming at them and when that will come out. I'd like to thank everybody that attended. I would also like to, because I know there's some contractors here today and I'm sure there are some watching as well, like to apologize to those contractors because we learned some things after we pushed this schedule out that really changed the direction of this schedule. So we issued projects to bid, we had projects on the streets. When we found out some of the information related and as a result of the Phase One flow monitoring and the hydraulic model, we made the decision to pull those projects back off the street. So had we known that before, we would have not presented this schedule to the contractors. So I want to make sure I apologize to anyone that came to that meeting and was expecting this schedule. The other thing that I'll just jump on before John starts through the hydraulic model that's really affected the Phase Three schedule is the affordability question. So, and we'll talk about that in more detail. But when we laid out this schedule, we really were operating under the pretense that the city had the ability to fund the entire consent decree with the existing rate structure that you had in place. As we got a hold of your financial model and started going through it, it became apparent to us that wasn't the situation. So rather than charge forward, trying to meet a consent decree deadline, we thought it best to pull those projects back, make sure you were doing the best project. it best to pull those projects back, make sure you were doing the best projects that you could do, and make sure we were spending your money as wisely as we could spend it to move forward. And I'll talk about that in a little bit more detail as well. So John, why don't you go ahead and walk me through the hydraulic model?
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the City Council. John Pruce from Burns &amp; McDonald. I'm the Director of Program Management for our global water practice. What I want to talk to you today about is the city's existing hydraulic model. The hydraulic model is meant to be a tool that allows you to simulate your actual performance of your collection system, so you know where there's bottlenecks in the system, where flows might be getting out of the system, so then you can target the repairs that you need to make in order to prevent those overflows. An important distinction about your consent decree is it's focused on wet weather overflow control. The expectation is when it's not raining outside, you shouldn't have any overflows because you're maintaining your system. When it does rain out, depending upon the size of the storm that you get, you might be getting a lot of rain in your system because of the age and degradation of the pipes and manholes, which requires you to then spend money to rehabilitate or to replace those assets. So the goal of the hydraulic model is to help you know where is the wet weather flow actually getting in the system, so then you can target how to remove that flow from the system. Also to validate where you know SSOs are occurring. The important part about the model is, it should tell you what you know. If you know where you're having overflows from your system, your model should be able to replicate that. Also, it should enable you to identify where you want to do inflow and infiltration reduction. Inflow is really where rainwater directly gets into the sewer system without any resistance. So it could be downspouts, it could be a stormwater interconnect with your sanitary sewer system. Whereas an infiltration source is where water has to percolate through the ground and then get through a crack or a defect in a manhole or a pipe. The other thing it's used for is to help you evaluate, what is the best solution to reducing the overflows that you're having? Yes, one of the first strategies are to keep the rainwater from getting in, so you don't have to pump it and convey it and treat it. But at other times, that may not be the most economical solution, because to remove a given quantity of rainwater in one area may have a much less effect than removing the same quantity of rainwater in another area of your system where it's contributing to overflows. And then the last thing it's supposed to do is, you're supposed to be able to use it to say, what type of success did we have in removing rainwater and improving the performance of the system to eliminate these overflows that we're required to do? This is a graphic that's going to show you the relative difference between what the raw flow data that was collected. They actually put meters in manholes to measure the flows during dry weather as well as rain events. And it's a comparison of the flow data to what the hydraulic model says you should be having in those same areas. So for example, if you see 51%, that means the raw flow data is 51% different than what the model says. What that should mean to you is the model's not very good as a predictive tool. 107% in the lower right. Again, that model is intended to tell you what you know. Well, you know what the flows are because you measured it. Unfortunately, that model is not calibrated well to enable you to use it as a tool to do the things that I mentioned earlier are important. So this is a good example of that.
Our model is broken based on those numbers, huh?
It's just not calibrated very well at all, yeah. And there's reasons for that. One of the reasons is the data that was initially collected in 2012, the existing flow meter data, there's lots of gaps in the data, meaning it doesn't exist in a given area, or the data that was collected is actually not good data to use. It's flawed. So going forward, what we want to do is, we want to take and update the hydraulic model, because you've spent a lot of time and money collecting information about the condition of your sewer system. As Ron mentioned, there's five phases of sewer system assessment, where you evaluate the condition of your manholes and sewers. We want to update the hydraulic model to incorporate the findings, both where the defects are, what the connectivity is between the pipes and the manholes, because there is improvement that can be made. We also want to recalibrate that model, so that it's more accurate in predicting your actual system performance that you're having, and then use it to identify in any given area, how much INI should we really target removing? Because we don't necessarily need to remove a lot in one area if it's not going to result in a reduction in an overflow, whereas we may need to remove more INI in another area. That's the purpose of the model. It's a design tool to help the design engineers know what should be the type of improvement they make and to what degree. And then finally, we want to optimize your system performance, making sure that we do the best we can with reducing INI, as well as making capacity improvements. Your consent decree requires that the city look at capacity improvements that are needed once you've removed as much inflow and infiltration as you can. The plan that got submitted to the EPA shows $280 million-plus dollars to make future capacity improvements. But that's using a model that's not well-calibrated. So we don't want to necessarily rely upon that and start building all these improvements going forward. We want to step back and say, let's make sure we have the confidence in the model, which we don't, which up to this point is suspect. Now I want to talk to you about assessing the affordability of your program. It begins with understanding whether or not the city has a long-term financial plan that enables it to invest in fulfilling its consent decree obligations that you have for wet weather overflow control, as well as the obligation that the city has to the current generation and future generations of taking care of what you own, which is the existing sewer system. The expectation is that it's going to provide reliable wastewater service to collect, convey, and treat the flows before you return it to the environment. The challenge is, you have to have a financial model or a plan that helps you accurately forecast and manage those costs over time. The other thing we look at is, we look at the financial burden of compliance with the Clean Water Act, which is what's driving your consent decree. EPA has a financial capability assessment, and the purpose of that is to determine what is the level of financial burden that the obligations have on the community. Well, if it's $350 million, it's much different than if it's $1.3 billion. And looking at the latest projections of cost of your consent decree against the financial burdens, you are definitely in a high burden, which could result in economic hardship on the community. And that's a justification to talk to the EPA about looking at ways to right-size your commitment. The other thing that we look at is, we look at the cost per household, per median household income. Now, we're using five-year average American Community Survey data. The last data was 2017, and this week, it's supposed to be 2018 coming out. And we use 2017 data, we used Consumer Price Index and forecasted it, the median household income in 2018 was a little over $38,700. That's the median of the community. But if you look then at the cost, or I should say, the income, the mean income of each quintile, which represents 20%, so there's five quintiles, the lowest quintile, its mean income for the year is $7,600. So you can imagine the size of a wastewater bill is going to have a much bigger effect on that lowest quintile. The second lowest quintile's average mean income is $13,800. Again, that's a significant burden when the wastewater bill keeps rising to pay for large obligations. And then your average, again, the median income is the $38,700. So we look at not only the impact of the cost on the median, but also individual quintiles. This is a schedule that shows what the council had approved to fund the wastewater utility. I'm showing you the water as well as sewer rates that have been put into place. Currently, the schedule is to do in 2020 a 6%, and then in '21 a 2%, and '22 a 2%. That was a schedule set out to fund what was believed to be the initial cost of $350 million. Your rate increases are very much in line with the industry average, which is 5% to 6%. In your case, you're running about 7% to 8%, but you have a consent decree, and not everybody does. What I want to show you here is that your average monthly wastewater bill runs a little over $44 a month currently. And other communities that have consent decrees are listed there with it, and you'll see that you're pretty much on par with these other communities at this stage in your program. Now this is where we look at the individual quintiles. Today's wastewater bill represents 1.4% of your median household income. The EPA has a guideline of 2%. And above 2%, I get concerned about the high financial burden and the impact on the economy. You can see the lowest quintile, it's already a little over 7% of their median household income. Now as we go forward, and we look at, okay, it's 1.4 for the median, how does that compare to these other communities? And you can see again, Shreveport is right, pretty much in the middle, compared to these other communities that have the consent decrees. And then we look at your ability to service debt. Now, prior to the consent decree in 2015, where you started to sell bonds, your debt service coverage was very good. And that's basically your revenue that comes in the door, unless you're operating in maintenance expenses, divided by your annual debt service for the bonds that you sell. As you started selling bonds to fund your consent decree, you can see that your debt service coverage went down significantly. And right now, it's estimated that you're about 1.3. Now, you have junior debt, and you have senior debt. The junior debt only requires a debt service coverage of 1.1. The senior debt is calculated by looking at the combination of senior debt and junior debt, and it can't be any less than 1.25. So that's what the difference is between them, and you're already at 1.3. What this should tell you is that you really don't have the capacity to take on more debt unless you generate additional revenue to service that debt going forward. So this graphic here is to show you what's not funded in your consent decree going forward. Each year, we're showing you through the remainder of your 12-year consent decree, which is through 2026. That adds up to a little over $900 million worth of commitment, and you have right now approximately $150 million that you have that's available to you to fund not only the consent decree obligations you have, but also to take care of the existing assets that I mentioned earlier, the obligation of current and future generations. So this is where the challenge is for the city going forward, and recognizing to be able to generate that much more revenue, you have to have a new rate structure to do that. And is that even financially viable?
Okay, John, can you jump back to that? You would. So a couple of things. One is, John talked about the hydraulic model. So the other element of the hydraulic model that plays into this is, that hydraulic model was used and will be used on design projects, right? So what was coming out of that hydraulic model fed Phase One, fed Phase Two, fed Phase Three designs, as to whether I'm just going to repair a pipe, or am I going to replace it with a larger pipe as part of it? So that's part of our concern in progressing on with the construction in Phase Three, is that a lot of that was based on a model that we don't have a lot of confidence in. And then the other thing that John mentioned, which I think this is really, this is really the telling thing, if your rate structure, if you're, let's say you're essentially to your maximum of what you can finance with your current rate structure, and John said you're at 1.3, I think that's actually next year. That's when you have a 6% rate increase, you're at 1.3. So you don't have much room to borrow more money, but you still have a lot of obligation left to finish based on this consent decree currently, which is really what you see in orange there. So the other element of pulling those Phase Three projects back was, rather than charge into Phase Three with another $140 million of construction and eat up all of your remaining reserves that you have allocated, without a rate strategy to cover the future obligation, probably not the best decision to make. So that's the other reason we pulled those Phase Three projects back, so that the city could evaluate what direction you wanted to go and move forward. I've probably taken a bit of the surprise out. So we have two go-forward strategies that we wanted to present to you today, right? One is raising the rates immediately to fund the consent decree obligation you're on, right? So you have seven years to finish this consent decree, you need another $900 million to do it, you could raise rates immediately to do that. The reality is, is that's just not feasible. The impact of those rates is just not feasible, and it's likely you would miss the consent decree schedule deadlines anyway because of the amount of work that you're doing in the original deadlines. I'm just going to, I'm going to back up here, and I'm going to show you a graph. So if you went down the path of that scenario, and you raised rates immediately to try and cover that, you would be talking about significant rate increases over the seven-year period, and look at what that would do to the affordability based on the individual segments of your population. Over 2/3 of your community would be above the 2% median household income threshold. So we just don't think that's a very viable approach to move forward. You'll have so much rate pressure and inability of the community to pay for it, you'll have spent a lot more money trying to comply, and I don't think you'll ever get through it to a successful completion. So the other approach that we've looked at, which we call Strategy Two, is continue on the rate strategy that you're on. So you've got a 6% lined up for 2020, and then you've got two years of 2% after that. To reprioritize your projects, both consent decree and non-consent decree projects, and use that $150 million that you have access to and spread it across the next two years, so that you're still taking care of your most critical projects, and you're investing in your most critical infrastructure needs, and that you're still working towards complying with the consent decree program, but you're not just blindly moving forward with trying to comply with just Phase Three system repairs. And while you're doing that, you're going to have to have an aggressive regulatory strategy and really work with the regulatory agencies and DOJ to try and reduce or renegotiate your obligation under that consent decree. Time doesn't solve the problem, although that's something you probably need, is more time to comply with this consent decree. Unless your community is moving forward at a rate of median household income growth that is more significant than inflation, it won't, time won't help you solve this problem in the end. You need to reduce that overall burden. So that's our recommendation to the city. You should know that if you go down that path, you will not meet the schedule deadlines as they are currently imposed in the consent decree, which will expose the city to stipulated penalties or potential stipulated penalties if you do it. But you will be making good decisions, I think, with respect to investing money into your utility assets. And if we can reprioritize those, if we can reprioritize those projects, I think it will actually improve the position of the utility from a long-term viability standpoint. In other words, rather than just trying to keep inflow and infiltration out of your system, let's address it in some of your facilities that really are functioning in a situation currently that needs investment, I'll say. So provided we go down that path, there are several next steps. One is that I know that there's been a lot of discussion related to emergency contracts, and because of some of the situations that you have, we need to get you better emergency contracting methodologies. We've developed some of those already and given them to staff. So I think you're going to want to get those in place to help you manage emergency situations as they come up. You're going to have to engage EPA and DOJ in an aggressive manner to really start to think about the long-term implications of this consent decree. John mentioned we need to update the hydraulic model, so that it's telling you better where you should be doing projects and what you should be doing. We don't want to repair a line that an inaccurate hydraulic model is telling you that you should have replaced that line with something bigger, or you don't want to replace a line that an accurate hydraulic model is telling you, you really didn't need extra capacity there, you should have just repaired it. So in addition to the facilities, we want to make sure those projects are right. I mentioned prioritizing the projects, develop a financing structure. It's likely, and I should tell you, that renegotiating a consent decree is not something that happens tomorrow. That is a long process. It is a multi-year process that you'll go through. And with that, there will be an expectation from the regulatory agencies that you've committed, you have committed to a consent decree, you have an obligation. So I think you'll also have to have a funding strategy for the future. It won't solve your problem, but I think it can help you address your problem.
My question is, who deals with the communication with EPA, DOJ, and DQ? Is it the city, the mayor, or is it you all? Do you all go with the city? Who communicates directly with EPA?
The city does. So we have council, we have outside council that's communicating with the EPA, DOJ. So we wanted to get this information out before we actually get into negotiations on how we can renegotiate the contract. And it's just two things I'll insert here, and I know you have a couple finalized points that I want to emphasize. The consent decree is a contract that the city signed with the federal government. There's no discretion in that contract at all. This is something the federal government has mandated that we do, and we signed our name on a dotted line to do so. And the second point is, had we not stepped on the brakes earlier this year, we would have definitely hit a financial cliff if spending continued to go the way that it was under the previous project manager. So this is bad news, but the news could have been worse. We could have been completely, you could have been getting a presentation where we're completely out of money, and we had no idea that we needed to even engage DOJ, EPA, to let them know that we had to renegotiate the contract that was signed in 2014. So it's one of those things where... renegotiate the contract that was signed in 2014. So it's one of those things where bad news doesn't get better with time. We got the bad news and we brought it to you as quickly as we could.
Dan, I'll just add on to Mayor Perkins. So because it, because it is a legal issue, attorneys are there. Our role tends to be support of the attorneys from a technical nature. So we'll look at the financial possibilities. We'll look at the projects and what you can accomplish and what's reasonable or what's cost-effective to accomplish as you go forward as well. Final item up there is just develop the communication.
I have another question.
Yeah, please.
So the, I'm hearing what the mayor is saying about hitting the brakes, learning what we're learning now, but wouldn't we have to have done the testing on Phase 1 that has given us some of the results so that we actually like would know where our SSOs are? Wouldn't we have, we would have had to do that with CDM Smith or with, with Burns McDonald, right?
Actually, the testing was with BKI.
Okay. And they created the hydraulic model?
Black and Beach actually created the hydraulic model.
Okay. So, so that wasn't BKI?
No, it was not. I believe Black and Beach created the model. It was through a BKI contract.
So if we are going to be reevaluating that, are we trying to do it with the same people that designed it?
Actually, we're reevaluating the model.
Okay. So y'all are taking over all of that?
We're, yes. We want to make sure that the model is functioning with what we believe it should be functioning.
Then we won't need to get a second opinion on y'all?
I hope not.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
Are you finished?
I am. Yeah, my final bullet was simply to say that as part of this, there's gonna be, there's gonna have to be a big community engagement. This is, you as a community are gonna have to, to, to voice your ability to pay for a program like this and what's affordable and what's not affordable. Because ultimately, it's the ratepayers and it's the citizens that have to, that have to cover this obligation. So the more you can speak as a, as a single voice, I think the more the, the regulatory agencies and DOJ will listen as part of that. So yes, sir, I am finished with the presentation. I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Mr. Chairman.
All right, Councilman Bradford.
When you started out, I was very concerned. Now I'm very disturbed.
Yeah.
You said a lot, and let me ask you then, before I ask my questions. If you knew what you know now, would you, would you have taken the, taken the project managers?
Well, absolutely. Our, our job is to help our clients, no matter what the situation is. I think if, I think if we had a sense that there was a funding issue, we, we talked about that in our interview, I know. It, I think if, if we would have known the situation on the finances earlier, we would have, we would have spent probably less time getting those Phase 3 packages ready to bid and trying to getting them out on the street. And we would have made, or made that turn or that shift towards what you really need is you need to spend the money to plan what you can afford to do and how you can afford to do it. So I think that's probably the thing that if we, if we had that information earlier, we would have changed a bit in our, in the delivery of it. But we certainly wouldn't have, we certainly wouldn't have shied away from trying to help.
Well, you know, I'm not at all intending to lay blame anywhere, but in my problem-solving techniques, I always like to consider the probable causes of why we are here.
Right.
You gave us some possible solutions. In regards to the probable cause, what was the, what was the breakdown? What was the, what was the, and I, I'm, I'm, I'm concerned because, you know, we, we're seven years into this project. I, I was on the council for four of those years. And the feedback we was getting was not as detailed and enlightened as you have presented here today. You, you, you used a term that was more consistent than previous, the previous project manager, and that was overflowing. We was more made aware of the, of the, of the breaches in the, in the sewer lines. And that, and the relining of the sewer lines was seemed like the, the primary issue that we was facing and not, and not overflow. Is that, is that?
Well, I'll tell you my perspective on, on, on some of, some of what caused how you got to where you are, right? I think the first is, you committed to a consent decree, or the city entered into a consent decree without knowing the status of the system, right? How bad the system was. So I think immediately you found out your system was much worse than, and it was anticipated. And because of that, the magnitude of spend, the magnitude of work, the magnitude of projects, all shot up dramatically. And, and then to go along with that, the, the structure of the program was, was very, it, it was done in pockets. Different groups were responsible for different things. And I don't really think you had anybody looking across the whole program to say, hey, it's great that we're doing all this extra work and we're making this extra investment, but, but has anybody looked to see, can we afford to make all of this investment and what's this gonna do in the long run if we make it? So you got probably too focused on trying to deliver the individual task that the consent decree was driving you to, to meet. And, and you didn't step back and say, gosh. And, and you know, in retrospect, it's a pretty easy step back to say, we thought this was 350 million. It's well over a billion dollars. Can we afford to spend a billion dollars on our wastewater system as part of it? So it's, it's easy once you get back away from it. But I think, I think everybody was so focused on delivering scheduled deadlines. And, and I think then probably what you heard as a council, you heard a lot about construction projects and construction inspection and, and things that relate to construction because that's what you were working on. You were trying to get that construction out. So that's, that's my best analysis.
You're, you're correct in a way. I mean, we are talking about three different councils and three, three mayors that, that this consent decree has been, has been comprised under. And there's very little continuity in, in, in passing on certain information. So, you know, this council is, is, is sort of mute to what you were expressing in the, in the breakdown or the, or the, the negligence somehow was, was that we did not fully as council members, previous, this council had been enlightened because of what you were presenting, but, and not getting, I think, the full detail of what, what, what was happening.
Yeah. I might add, it's, this is, while this is not a good situation to be in.
Sure.
Right? That's apparent and obvious. It's not an unusual situation to be in either. Many cities that enter into consent decrees like this find themselves as they, they, they often enter into the consent decree without knowing the extent of the situation or the, or the challenge that's ahead of them. And often in the early years of that program, when they start to realize how, how burdensome the cost is to comply, that they simply can't, that they simply can't meet the, the threshold of that burden. So it's, it's something that's not unusual. It's certainly a large magnitude here because you've had such a dramatic increase in costs related to the program, but.
Well, Ron, listen, I, I'm gonna be candid and say that, understanding what you just said is one thing. Spending a half a billion dollars and not being where we thought or think we are is another thing.
It is.
And so I guess my, my question, last question maybe, and I mean, I'm very disturbed. I, I can't, and Mayor, I couldn't answer the question, but we need to research probable causes of why we are where we are. And now, and we can do that internally because this is, this is unacceptable to spend this much money. We, I know you inherited it, but at the same time, we should not be facing what we're facing. So from, from, from your company's perspective, and given the, the information that you know and share, how far do we go? Do we, I know you, we engaged EPA about sort of getting an extension or renegotiating some phases of what we're doing.
Right.
How far do you go? Are you, are you prepared to go all the way? Or, or do we need to make some adjustments in how we could generate some more revenue to, to make your job continuous?
Well, I think that, and really this is the, the go-forward path that we've laid out, is that you're gonna see a shift in the program. So rather than stay focused on construction and spend all 150 million that you have available to you on construction this upcoming year in trying to comply, you don't, you don't have enough to comply with Phase 3, let alone start Phase 4 designs and finish Phase 5 preliminary work, right? Without, without more debt issuance. So, so rather than drive it that direction and stay focused as we have been, our, our strategy is to step back from that a bit to continue to drive forward critical projects so that there's still some construction coming into the community, that there's still some design efforts that are really addressing infrastructure that you need to survive for the next 50 years, right? That are critical components of your infrastructure. But likewise, shift our focus more towards then the planning component of, of helping you define what you can afford to do in the future and how does that fit with the regulatory strategy or the regulatory agency's role as well. So for us, it's a shift. So, and, and that's fine. That's, we, we do that all the time. And that's really how firms like ours are built, to shift in what you do. But that, that'll be the difference that you all see, I think, as you move forward in the next few years. If you go down this path, you're gonna see much less construction-related effort and much more planning and engineering-related effort related to what should we be doing and how much will that cost and what's the right project to do in the given circumstance.
And I appreciate that, Ron, but at the same time, the clock is ticking, isn't it?
It is. You are under, you are under a mandated consent decree. That is correct.
So.
And I think you move as expeditiously as you can with the funding that you have.
Councilman, if I can jump in, again, I guess the silver lining to this is the fact that we caught it early enough to where we've already, we're already starting talks with EPA, DOJ. So if we didn't say anything, and then we came up to the deadline and we ran out of money and we didn't complete any of the projects, and we said, hey, let's renegotiate at the deadline, then I think the EPA, DOJ would be a lot, I think they'll be a lot, they would have been a lot less kind than they are now with us self-reporting this issue and starting negotiations before our time runs out.
So, so there has been some communications?
There has been. Yeah, there has been. Yeah, I got this, this briefing a couple days ago. And yeah, we've, we've been working with council, myself and the city attorney to make sure that dialogue is started.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right. Councilman.
Mr. Chairman, I'll first echo Councilman Bradford's concerns about the fact that we, we spent almost half a billion dollars and are not where we anticipated we would be based on initial projections. Somewhere in the process, lines of communication broke down between the people on the ground and the governing authority of the city, the council, the mayor. There is no reason that we should be learning that the consent decree set a bar far too high for us to meet in 2019 rather than several years prior. And I, I agree with Councilman Bradford that that, that merits further internal study and consideration. We need to make sure that that never happens again because the financial consequences for the city have been and will continue to be substantial. It, it's apparent from Mr. Coker's presentation that the city just can't afford to comply with the consent decree. When we agreed to that deal with the government, we thought the cost was going to be in the range of 350 million dollars. We heard in a committee meeting this afternoon that the total cost potentially could be as great as 1.5 billion dollars. Sometimes two parties make a deal, but they're mistaken about the facts that are relevant to the deal. And that's what's happened here. But we certainly have acted in good faith in negotiating with EPA and DOJ, and we fully intend to comply with our obligations to the federal government to the extent we can. But we can't do what we agree to do. And so Burns and McDonald's proposal with the support of the administration to slow down, even if it means incurring potentially some stipulated penalties, really is our only option. My last comment for now will be that we cannot ask current ratepayers to shoulder the full cost of remedying generations of infrastructure neglect. And one of the charts that Mr. Coker put on the PowerPoint showed that if we were to raise rates high enough to pay for everything we agreed to do under the consent decree, we would have people in, in the bottom income quintile, the bottom fifth of our community paying 20% of their income to their water bills. So we're just not doing that. I really, I, I commend Mayor Perkins for addressing this issue head-on. This was a huge ongoing project. When he took office, what we were doing when he was sworn in was not working, obviously. And the transition of Burns and McDonald has been a very positive one, in my view. And I hope that, that the firm can help us get out of what really is a very significant mess. Thank you.
All right. Councilwoman Fuller.
Thank you, Chair. With the change in the work, in the type of work, will your fee be changing as well?
Well, actually, it, yes, it will, particularly with respect to, to the activities that we're doing. So, so we've, we have proposed to the administration next year's fee with much less construction-related activity. Now, it doesn't, it tends to balance out because we've proposed much more planning and, and design, or not engineering design, but engineering analysis activity as part of it. So I know, Councilwoman, that you asked me this last time I was here, would our fee next year be any more than it was?
I'm traumatizing you. I'm sorry.
Last year. And, and it will not be. We proposed a similar fee, but with a big shift in, in what we're doing as part of that, as part of that effort.
Another question goes back to the model and all that. I need you, let's play Schoolhouse Rock for a minute.
Okay.
So.
Hard to do with a hydraulic model, but we'll try.
You can do it. But then you've got an equally.
All right.
If the, if, if what's happening is that there's an SSO increase, the inflows infiltration increase, and we're looking at the model and saying, maybe we had the wrong target to begin with. So you're studying it and reevaluating the model. Are you moving the target to end up possibly moving it back? Or have we looked at, are y'all assessing all the reasons that y'all think it's off? Like, is any of this to do with potentially the laterals on private property that are probably falling apart as well, which is causing, now that everything else is tightened up?
Right.
The stuff that's coming in?
I think you've got to look at, I think you have to look at everything that's a potential contributor to overflows.
So we are doing that before we completely move the target and then have to move it back?
I think you'll want to look at everything. I think, you know, if you look at other consent decree programs, many communities have found that it's, it's more cost-effective to address inflow and infiltration off of private property than public property. So much so that the municipality, the utility will pay in some cases for that private property investment because it's, because it's a much better investment for the community as a whole to eliminate that. So that's certainly, I think, a private INI program is certainly something you're gonna want to look at. I think that the primary thing that I think you've got to do with respect to the model and with the direction is, you've got to understand where your system is overflowing and what's the best strategy to eliminate that overflow, right? That's, that's how you come into compliance, is to eliminate that overflow out of the system. Repairs to the system can help prevent that overflow, and they will extend the life of the system. But, but it's not necessarily a, a one-for-one. Just because I make a repair doesn't mean I eliminated an overflow as part of it. So I think you have to have a shift away from, I'm just gonna repair every defect I see, to, I'm gonna repair the defects that are important for the longevity of my system and that are important to help me reduce overflows out of this system.
Okay. My new obsession is green infrastructure.
Yes.
Is it prudent that everything we're doing right now be focused on gray infrastructure? Or could we be looking at mitigating some of this through other means?
Well, so we actually do a lot of green infrastructure in other communities. Green infrastructure typically relates to stormwater, not wastewater. So in the communities, for instance, in Kansas City where we manage their program, it has a several hundred million-dollar green infrastructure component of that, but it's a combined sewer system. So you're keeping that stormwater out of the sewer, keeps it from overflowing as part of it. So I don't know that there's a direct connect with green infrastructure here. But what I will tell you about green infrastructure, and I think it relates to your stormwater, your stormwater projects in particular, we are big fans of green infrastructure. It, it provides ancillary benefit to your community so that it's, the solution's not just underground where it provides no additional benefit or multiplier effect. So green infrastructure, in, in our experience, can help improve property values, can help improve quality of life within the communities that you put it in. So where you can put it in cost-effectively and replace gray infrastructure, totally, totally agree with that, with that philosophy. And we can certainly look at where it could apply here as well to see if there's any opportunity for here.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Chair.
All right. Councilman Butts.
Thank you for the presentation. I want to, I want to commend the mayor and his office for giving us this information. I, I think that, that the citizens deserve to know this and understand why these rate, rate increases are going up. I, I too, like Councilman Nicholson, am extremely concerned. I don't think that we have the capacity to finish this project as we're going right now. I mean, it just, it's very concerning to me. And it's one of the things that keeps me up at night, the, the debt that the city has. I, I think that, kind of putting a pause on it and looking I think that, kind of putting a pause on it and looking exactly where we are is the right thing to do. So, Mayor, I commend y'all for doing that and let's step, you know, take a deep breath and see where we're at. On the, you know, on the, on the report that we've gotten in, that was completed this fall on Phase One, my concern is, and there's some conversation today in the infrastructure meeting for everybody here and that's listening, that may not have heard that conversation, that the laterals could be an issue that might be contributing to more water going into the system. Is that, is that a concern?
Well, I think laterals are certainly a concern anytime you're in a system trying to prevent inflow and infiltration because you have, you typically have as much pipe in the laterals as you do in the, in the main system or your main utility system. So the connection of that lateral to, to your system and the condition of that lateral to the house or to the, to the facility, I think is always, is always a concern and always something that you want to, to take into account when you're looking at your overall strategy.
Could that be contributing to the, the increase that we're seeing?
Well, I mean, in theory, that would have already been there, right? Nothing changed with the lateral with respect to the repairs that you made. So, so I think probably maybe a better way to think about that Phase One, those Phase One results are, we need to get your, we need to get your model functioning where, where we think it's giving you better answers and then let's look at what those Phase One results are telling us about how to apply, how to apply future dollars as part of it. You know, the thing about, the thing about the position that you're in, the dollars that you've spent have been invested back into your system. There's a value in investing those dollars back into your system. It's, it's just that those, that investment may not, may not be helping you as much as you had hoped in complying with overflows out of your system.
And I think that's where my concern is.
Right.
We've spent all this money and now we don't. It doesn't look like we're getting return on. It's not anybody's fault. I mean, it's just, just the nature of the beast. And I think that, you know, if you think that we've got old sewer mains that are clay and caving in, then the laterals have to be old and caving in and it's just, you know, but I had a client the other day that, that ended up spending almost four grand to get from his house to the new sewer in an older neighborhood. So, I mean, I just don't know where that burden's going to be and it's very concerning for me. But I, I really appreciate the conversation and like Councilman Bradford and Councilman Nicholson and Councilwoman Fuller said, it's one of these things that causes me great concern because I just don't know where we're going to go from here. So I look forward to these, you know, to the new model that you're going to have and us kind of taking a little break and figuring out where we're at.
And it's our intent, and I think we'd, we'd mentioned this to the mayor and to the council previously, our intent is to come about, to come back to you about once a quarter with an update on where we are because I think even if, even if you haven't progressed a lot in construction, I think it's, at this point forward, you're going to be very interested in where we are with respect to understanding cost, understanding, understanding the financial component and understanding the model and the, and the components related to cleaning as part of that. So that will still be our intent. We're certainly welcome to come back more often if you, if you so desire. But transparency for us is very important because we think that for you as elected officials, if we can give you the best information we can provide, it's going to help inform your decisions as you go forward as part of it. And these are tough decisions because, you know, a lot of this infrastructure is not easily visible and not necessarily easy to understand.
I would also, Mayor, if there's not a problem with it, I would like to see us put this, this PowerPoint presentation on the city website where the citizens can know exactly where we are and what we're looking at. Then when another rate increase comes up, they can understand, "Look, it was planned 2%. We did 6. We're going to do 2 and 2," but that there is a possibility that could go up even more, which we don't want to do. So, but I'd like, if we could, put that on the website. I think that would be helpful to the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
One final question. And again, I appreciate very much your presentation. I mean, very, very enlightening. My question and concern is, as we engage EPA, DOJ, what would be the worst-case scenario if they're not receptive to what we are facing? Is there a worst-case scenario?
Well, I'd probably leave that to the attorneys or your legal advisors to give you that, that answer.
Oh, yeah, there is a worst-case scenario.
All right, well, we'll, we'll cross that bridge later. We just leave your...
Thank you all. Again, sorry, sorry to follow your holiday, your holiday reading, but thank you for the time.
Congratulations, we still have Cookie left. You did good.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my remarks and special guests.
All right.
Does anyone have anything relative to property standards?
We did that already.
Y'all already did that? So we're with, we're with Mr. Clark?
Republican. Who we at now?
Master plan? All that? We're going to Mr. Green on this.
Back down to...
We're still in the...
Yeah, of course. That's him. Okay. Mr. Clark, you come for?
Just real briefly, Mr. Chair and Council, we've had a very good year with master planning, as you well know. We sort of reinvigorated the master planning subcommittee and master planning efforts in 2019 and that was done under the leadership of Councilwoman Lavette Fuller. We're very appreciative of her and her leadership. We have some pretty impressive and exciting plans that we're going to be doing in 2020. We just concluded that 2020, our eyesight will be 2020 and our view will be 2020 and the way we look at it, City Shreveport and Cattle Parish will be done through 2020 Vision as we lead up to the 2030 Expectation of the Great Expectations Master Plan. But we will be hopefully coming to you each month and get back into the routine of bringing you updates at your meeting. But we're going to be doing some revisions to the master plan, which will impact the Unified Development Code. We realize that in a lot of instances, we have been amending and amending and amending and amending and amending the UDC and maybe we need to review how the master plan actually intended for us to progress orderly and start down some of the patterns that the master plan, as we go into the updating of the master plan. So we just look forward to coming back before you in 2020 with these plans and the results that we have gained from our work in 2019. Any questions?
Councilman Green.
Mr. Clark, I'd just like to thank you for all the work that you do and I really appreciate it and applaud you and just keep up the good work, but on another note, I see now we're going to have to get them food trucks and do a fundraiser for the city, so...
And we've made them all legal, Councilman Green, so they can raise money for the school project.
Billion-dollar tacos is a lot of tacos, Councilman.
Just want to give you a little hands up on it.
We want to bring in as many food trucks as we possibly can in 2020.
All right, Mr. Clark, thank you, man.
Thank you all. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
All right, we should have all received our budget to actual financial report and there's no public hearing. Mr. Thompson, is there any legislation to be added today?
We have none.
All right. We have the following request to speak.
Mr. Alonzo Sanders.
Alonzo Sanders, 1019 Pickett Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. I have a new zoning request for 1016 Fairfield and 1023 Pickett Street, which I'm requesting it to be rezoned to C3. It's actually a different parcel, it's not going to be a car lot, I want to put that out there. I would like to ask that the city council not remand me back to the MPC for this and make a decision on it, a justified decision, whether it be a denial or approval. I accept that, but I do want the chance and the opportunity to exhaust all the remedies afforded to me to take it to district court if I have to. My last case, I was remanded back to the MPC, which I've already exhausted my remedy. So I have a meeting with Mr. Clark tomorrow. Hopefully it goes well. If not, then I plan on taking it to district court. I don't want to, to be honest with you, I feel like the money that I could be spending on taking the city to court, I could be building my building with. I definitely don't want to have to subpoena officials, do testimonies, interrogaries, and take up a lot of, maybe the council members who I may subpoena, MPC officials who I may subpoena time because I feel that y'all have other business you need to take to, especially after hearing maybe multi-billion-dollar proposal for water in the city. One of the reasons that I don't want to go back to the MPC is that I'm afraid of these people. I'm asking that the city council do an investigation and make a sound, justified, reasonable decision on my case instead of remanding me back to the people who, in my last speaking request, I said I was afraid of. So I want to make it very clear that I've done everything that I was supposed to do. If the MPC wants to speak to me, I don't have a problem with it, but what I do want is my land to be changed back to C3 as it was when I purchased it. It's causing extreme harm on my family, on me, mental and emotional distress as well from this process that I've been ongoing since 2016 with MPC. And I think that a lot of people already are aware of some of the developers in the area who have had problems getting permits, who have left, who have maybe gone to Bossier, who have just gave up. I won't give up. And I'm asking that whoever is in charge of this believe in me that I will build a beautiful building, something that will be prosperous for the city as well as that will employ people as well. What I don't want to do is...
Mr. Sanders, your, your time is expired, but let me ask you, is this before us now or is it coming up?
It's before you now.
Before the, before us today?
I don't know if you have to make a decision on it today, but...
It'll be in two weeks.
Okay, in two weeks, very good, okay.
I'm in, I'm on the 10th, I'm 14.
I'm 14.
It's, it's up for introduction today.
Okay. Well, I, look, I would encourage you to talk with Mr. Clark as you said you would. I'm committed and all my colleagues are committed to treating you and everyone that comes before us fairly.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Michael Laban.
Hello, my name is Michael Laban, 1298 Leonard Road, Shreveport, co-owner and operator of 30 Discount Liquor and Wines. I was going to come up and talk about the amended hours for retail liquor, but I understand your amendment is going to be 7:00 a.m. to midnight.
Mr. Laban, my proposition to the council is that we change the closing hours for stores where the primary commodity sold is alcohol from, from what they are now, which is 4:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m., to midnight to 7:00 a.m. That's, that's what I intend to propose to the council.
Then, at that case, would any council members have any questions for me about why it would be detrimental to close them any longer than that?
I would ask that question, why?
Okay. Just, 30 liquor, as you know, has been around since 1961. We are open, the hours we're open because the business demands that we're there. We have 10 stores in Shreveport, five in Bossier. Of the 10 stores in Shreveport, most of them open at 7:00 a.m. We have people that come in that work night shifts, people that work at the casinos, medical industry. They come in, they pay their bills. You can also pay your electric, your utility bills in our stores, our locations. You can cash your payroll check. You can also purchase alcoholic adult beverages, eggnog, daiquiris, if you're still in the Christmas spirit. Closing, closing that time would affect those people. We find those people would go to Blanchard, go to Bossier to do their, their, because when people get off work, or they might be going to work, if they have to be at work at 8:00 a.m., they come in and they have to pay their electric bill, their phone bill, their mortgage bill, their car note, their water bill, the sewer bill. They pay those with us every, every month and that would affect them, they'd have to go somewhere else. That would drive business away from Shreveport. Also, if we were not allowed to be open at those hours, just because, as it states, we are a primary liquor store, then you're allowing our competition, Circle K's, grocery stores, to sell the same product that we would be barred from selling. That money, those, those companies there don't belong in Louisiana, they don't belong in Shreveport. Their corporations are in Minnesota, Ohio, Texas. We are locally owned, we are locally operated. It would be hard to go against the home team. Closing those hours also would affect our employees. Our employees work and all of our full-time employees get overtime every week. One employee getting cut an hour a day, six days a week would be 312 hours of overtime that would be taken out of their paycheck. For the roughly 80 employees that we have in Shreveport that are full-time, that would be 25,000 hours of overtime that they would no longer get and/or spend in Shreveport. I understand that it might be that some businesses don't behave properly. We've been around much too long. We, we know that we have a standard to bear. We take pride in being a good, responsible citizen and business of Shreveport and Bossier. If, if, if there's a store out there, or stores out there, or people out there doing something wrong, the ATC can, can deal with them individually, but to put a blanket on every business and affect us would be unfair to us and, to us as a company, I'm sorry. Would y'all have any questions about our concerns? And if you want to change it from seven, being able to be open from 7:00 a.m. to midnight, we understand that, but we would ask that you not take any more hours away from us.
All right. Councilman Flair.
Thank you, Mr. Laban.
Yes, sir.
I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
How many armed robbers have you had this year?
I, I don't know, but it's been very, very few. I mean, I don't have the statistics, but do you?
My second question is, through the years, how many, under city ordinance, how many times have you been cited by the Shreveport Police Department for selling underage?
That I can't tell you, but it's, it's less than, than any other business outside. We take pride in, in the fact that we don't want to sell to underage. Unfortunately, when you get that many employees and, and someone takes it upon themselves to make that move, you know, we take it personal, we have to, you know, terminate them. We take our responsibility very serious. We know there's just consequences for, for not obeying the law. That's why we choose to obey the law on all fronts.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir. Councilman Butts.
Mr. Laban, thank you. I owe you a phone call, too.
Oh, that's all right.
Mr. Toobes came to the, Tracy came to the, to the Public Safety Committee meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago and, you know, I think that we want to be, work with y'all any way that we can. So this amendment to be open, to be closed from 12:01 a.m. to 6:59 a.m. is something that y'all could live with.
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that was, that was what I was understanding.
Yes, sir. The reason I was here, though, is on the website, it states 7:59 a.m.
Right, right.
And that, that was the issue. I spoke, I believe, with Mr. Nicholson the other day and I was just, I thought I'd understood it, but I saw the, the website and it just said differently.
Okay, I just, I wanted to make sure that that, that you knew that that was on the table and that, you know, I, I think that Mr. Nicholson's idea about this is good. I think that we need to, to maybe, you know, change up some things on it, but I agree with you about people that work in the medical field coming, you know, after they get off work or working in a casino or something like that, so, and we don't want to, we don't want to send that revenue across the river, so, thank you.
No. Yes, sir. Anybody else?
Mr. Councilman, okay, the amendment is what he said he could, he can live with.
He can live with the amendment.
That's one A.
Councilman Butts, I'll just, I'll just restate the amendment that's now before the council. Current law allows...
it, but I saw the, the, the website, and it just said differently.
Okay, I just, I wanted to make sure that that, that you knew that that was on the table, and, uh, that, you know, I, I think that, uh, Mr. Nicholson's idea about this is good. I think that we need to, uh, to maybe, uh, you know, change up some things on it, but I agree with you about people that work in the medical field coming, you know, after they get off work, or working in a casino, or something like that, so, and we don't want to, we don't want to send that revenue across the river, so, thank you.
No, yes, sir. Anybody else?
Mr., Mr., Councilman, okay, the, the amendment is what he said he could, he can live with.
He can live with the amendment.
That, that's one A.
Uh, Councilman Flair, I'll just, I'll just restate the amendment that's now before the council. Current law allows liquor stores to stay open 22 hours a day. They've only got to close between 4:00 AM and 6:00 AM. The initial legislation that I proposed would have had liquor stores close at 9:00 PM and open at 8:00 AM. That was not well received by the public or by several of our colleagues. The amendment before the council today would amend ordinance, and if adopted as amended, the ordinance would require all stores where the primary commodity sold is alcohol for off-premises consumption to close at midnight and open back up at 7:00 AM, seven days a week.
And, and your, your establishment is, is acceptable to that?
Yes, sir. Uh, as you know, we have one of our stores in, our very first stores in your district, and, which is a industrial area. A lot of those people get off, you know, work nights, you know, a lot of these plants work 24 hours, not as many as used to, but, and those people, as long as they come in at 7:00 AM, that would be acceptable to us.
Okay, and I, I'll, I'll, I'll discuss it with the council when we get to that, uh, to that amendment. Thank you, sir. I'm, I'm through.
Yes, sir.
Asking you questions.
Thank you, Mr. Laban. That it? Merry Christmas to everybody, thank you.
Merry Christmas. And I'm coming to get my eggnog daiquiri, and I'm coming after 12 o'clock, and I ain't doing nothing. And I don't plan on closing y'all before 12 o'clock midnight, I'm not doing it.
Just call me, and we'll have it, we'll have it sitting there in the drive-through waiting room.
Thank you.
Oh, good golly.
Hi.
Can't take any of y'all anywhere.
Mr. Chairman, those are all the requests to speak.
All right. We have no executive appointments to be considered tomorrow, right about the, yeah. I mean, today, I'm sorry. Mr. Thompson.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, there is one person on the clerk's list, Mr. Clayton, I believe.
Yep. Mr. Clayton, if you would come forward, please. Hey, welcome, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you. Thank you for having me today.
Of course. To, to what have you been appointed by the mayor?
I, it's my understanding that the mayor, um, has selected me, uh, for the CIRA board.
Remind me.
And I'd like to thank him for, for selecting me and nominating me.
The Redevelopment Authority, led by Tom Arsenault. He's the, uh, the, uh, Shreveport Bar Association gets the nomination, and, um, so we selected Attorney Clayton for our nomination for the CIRA board. You, uh, last week, you all confirmed Parker Brown for, um, I think like a at-large member, so this is the Shreveport Bars nomination for it.
Well, I know Mr. Clayton well, and so don't have any questions for him from that, above and under the colleagues.
I know him well, and I just want to grill him for fine. Are you familiar with what, with the functions of this board?
I've read the, uh, the fact sheet, and it's of great interest to me.
I thought it might be. Uh, if you go back and listen to, um, some of the podcasts that Mr. Tell everyone, Mr. Clayton, about your podcast.
Well, we started the 3180 Podcast. Buddy Mount, Thomas Young, and I started this podcast out of Cohab.
Now, there's something, there's some of these things that come up with the Redevelopment Authority you've spoken about on your podcast, we've spoken actually about them. Would you mind just reviewing a couple of those things that interest you, and how, that pertain to this?
I think, yeah, I, I think Shreveport's, um, Shreveport could benefit from some creative thought process as to the economic development, uh, that currently goes on in town. I think a lot of private enterprise could inject itself into current nonprofit work and government work, and from what I understand, the CIRA board is comprised of a number of folks that are doing just that.
To an extent, but another, a big issue is with blight, and you are gonna be a little bit handcuffed about what you all can do because of the limited authority that that board has, but I think that you've got some interesting ideas and some interesting perspectives on it because of where your law practice is, is housed.
Indeed, and right across from my law practice, Domino's just boarded up their shop, so now I can't get pizza at 9:00 o'clock when I'm up there working.
Poppin' Pizza.
Poppin' Pizza? Okay, well, Domino's, you know, was beckoned to me every evening, and, and you could smell the pepperoni cooking, and now it's, now it's all boarded up. So, just another example of, um, what we can do to the Highland area, and hopefully to downtown to eliminate some of the blight.
So, you're, you're ready to hit the ground running, then?
One more time.
You're ready to hit the ground running on this, then?
Indeed.
Awesome, thank you.
I'd love to. February 20th is the next meeting for Tom Arsenault's email to me, and I look forward to attending.
Thank you.
Councilman Flair?
Uh, Councilman Bradford, is this the board that your cousin Cedric tried to change the legislation on down there in Baton Rouge to give him more authority? Do you recall?
He was trying to spread dissension between me and my cousin.
No, I'm just asking questions. Is this the Bill that got killed down there?
I think it is, Councilman.
Is that the one?
But it would have been a good thing if he gotten away with it.
It's, it's all good.
Okay, thank you. That's the only question I have.
That's it. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate you. Thanks for having me today. Thank you for nominating.
Mr. Chairman, we're ready for regular agenda legislation.
Yes, sir, please.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry.
Councilman Green?
This, before we get through, do that, um, my amendment 169, I'd like to, uh, remove it because Councilwoman Fuller has, uh, an amendment with all of them in there, and I'd just like to remove that one before we, uh, got started. That's 169.
Okay. I think it's a few of them on there, we'll have to do that, too, so we'll just catch them as we, yeah, as we go, because, uh, Nita still has a friend that sent me an email jumping on me about trying to get somebody money twice, so, let's make sure we, we involve.
She emailed me, too. All the way from California emailing us.
You said Ken had a-
I'm sorry?
I believe they're saying Ken Craft had a, um-
Ken Craft?
Besides the oration, I have a couple of- Thank y'all. Merry Christmas again. Ken Craft, 157 Archer Avenue, 71105. Not on my original list, but I'll repeat what I mentioned six years ago, I guess, 13, and, uh, again, once under Mayor Tyler, and first time under your administration. The cities which have appointed a single contact point for consent decrees have done far better than the cities that have it split among the Water Department, the administration, the attorney, the council, the legislative body. That's why communications break down. There must be and should be moving forward a single person under someone's jurisdiction, preferably the office of the mayor, but we don't have that. We, we have different people who deal with the consent decree in different capacities, but it all should route through an individual person. And I just want to sell-
Mr. Craft, can I comment on that?
Yes.
You know, earlier this year, we asked council to give us approval to fund a position in the engineering department specific to consent decree, so, we're trying, so if you know any engineers that will, uh, take a pay cut, uh, to come and work in the public sector, we'll be happy to, to have a point person, and anybody else listening, too. So, uh, yeah, come and, come and do some public service and work for the city of Shreveport. We'd be happy to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Mary. It need not necessarily be an engineer, but it must be a good manager, preferably an engineer. And I want to celebrate my wife 7.3% of a millennium today, and funny thing, one president got impeached last night and the other one today, 20 something years ago, just coincidental. And it's Thrifty Liquor that has not received about $10,000 of my money for her cigarettes. Sorry about that. Please appoint early next year, and I talked to the clerk and Mr. Flair, if possible, a citizens review committee of the city charter. We haven't done it in decades. Uh, if possible, via a council resolution, the charter art was helping me, I'm not sure how it's done, the mechanism by which it's best done, but maybe a resolution would be appropriate. And if we revisit bonds and infrastructure next year, whether on November 3rd or December 5th, uh, whatever charter amendments we put forward, we certainly want to have the same ballot date. We don't want to have bonds on one election and charter amendments on another. Let's at least do it the same, the same day. And a pay boost for the public safety personnel. A lady who moved here from Tennessee, who doesn't know, made a comment innocent enough that, no mayor would veto a, a pay raise for police. Well, Mayor Glover did on October 24th of '08. Grayson's predecessor, Councilman Woolley, got Resolution 205 of '08 introduced on 9/9. Easy to remember because borough and breeze for me, and then postponed, but passed on the 14th, and they couldn't get five votes. And, and Mayor Hussey in the 80s also vetoed a pay raise for public safety, so it can't happen, but if we have any money at all after we close the books, even if it's a one-time raise, we ought to, I'm, I'm tired of spending my tax money to train police officers and firefighters, and they leave to go to other cities. And of course, y'all can see, I'm now working for the Census Bureau. You want a job, 2020census.gov/jobs. If they hire me, they'll hire anybody.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Uh, we're now into, uh, resolutions on second reading and final passage. The first is Resolution 148. It authorizes the mayor to enter into a donation agreement with the Caddo Parish Coroner's office for two decommission stretchers.
So moved.
Second?
It's been moved by Councilman Green, second by, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's moved by Councilman Green, second by Councilman Bradford. No discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson.
Resolution 152 authorizes the mayor to accept an NCAN donation worth $19,250 in value from the UVH Foundation to the city to be utilized by the police department.
So moved.
Second?
It's been moved by the chair, second by Councilman Green. There's no discussion, please vote. That motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson.
Resolution 153 authorizes the mayor to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Theater of the Performing Arts.
So moved.
Second?
It's been moved by Councilman Green and second by Councilwoman Fuller on 153. There's no discussion, please vote. That motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson.
Uh, Resolution 154 authorizes the mayor to execute an agreement between the city and Carr, Riggs, and Ingram LLC for the purpose of an external audit of the city.
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilman Green and second by Councilman Butcher. If there's no discussion, please vote. And that motion carries with six.
We've done Resolution 161. Resolution 166 allocates funds to specific not-for-profit organizations from funds budgeted and other charges in the 2020 Riverfront Development Special Revenue Fund. I believe this is one with all of the, that uses the entire $150,000.
So moved on your amendment.
Second, may I make a comment, though?
It's not amended.
It's not amended, it's just, uh-
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I thought it wasn't-
So moved.
So moved, yeah. Oh, no.
Um, I just want to say, um, it's a very small pool of money, because we don't have a lot of money to give to the nonprofits, and originally, this was supposed to be the red, the Riverfront Development Special Revenue Fund, looking specifically at economic development. A few years ago, it opened up to look at other nonprofits additionally. Um, we all have different groups that are close to our hearts, that are from our districts. A lot of the nonprofits on that list are in my district, and it's painstaking for all of us to have to look at a list unless we don't have enough money to give to everyone. Sometimes you're looking at a little bit of money, and you realize that, uh, there's a big amount of money that's being requested, and it might just add insult to injury to give someone a small bit of that money, but other times, you know that a little bit can still go a long way, and so you do what you can, and I just want to thank my colleagues for working with me to see how we could just go ahead and work with everyone that we were trying to work with and award that money, and for those that were not able to receive anything this year, keep working on your present, your proposals, keep reaching out so that we have a better idea of what you do and the effect that you're having on the community. Thank you, Chair.
All right, we didn't quite work with you, you just told us what we were gonna do.
That's, that's what I said.
Councilor Bradford.
Uh, I, I want to comment on the chair lady, but, Mr. Thompson, I want to be clear now, about adopting this, everything else go away? Uh, everything except 170, which is a different pool of money, that's- Yeah, I understand, yeah, I'm saying, anyway, um, I've come in the chair lady, I mean, the council lady. We said during the budget process, I think you remember that, we need to share that little pot of money, you know, and looking at, embedding those needs versus, um, opportunities. And I thought you did a good job in looking at that and, and breaking it down. I mean, um, when you got 150,000, but the request is eight, 8.5, I mean, 8,000 plus, you know, is, 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 is just not, you know, is just not, um, reasonable to say we can do that. But, uh, you contacted me and some others to, to try to reach some compromise on the priorities that we saw, and I thought you did a good job in doing that.
Thank you.
And I will support you.
Appreciate it.
The resolution.
Councilman Flair?
Chairman Bowman and, uh, Councilman Bradford, since we came here, this, uh, amount continues to shrink.
Yes.
And, and would it not be, uh, fair to say next year that may shrink some more?
It could.
The possibility is, but it's certainly been shrinking since we came on board in 2015.
18 years ago, Mr. Flory, um, I was a recipient of these funds when they was generating in, in, in the neighborhood of 18 million dollars because of the riverboats that, that in activity they was, uh, manufacturing. Uh, it's almost half that now because of the gaming has expanded throughout other states.
Well, the preachers are really pretty tired on it, so that, a lot of people-
Oh, oh, stop gambling?
Against gambling.
They preach against gambling, they stop gambling? Well, anyway, um, I, I said that to say that, that as, as, as a nonprofit that I, that I, that I was the president of, we, we were very fortunate to be in a position 18 years ago where the financing was a lot, a lot more advantageous, but we have to do what we have to do. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Here we are. Here we vote. That motion carries with seven.
Mr. Chairman, I think, uh, resolutions 167, 168, and 169 have been removed by the authors. That is correct. Uh, so we're now into, uh, Resolution 17. It reallocates and allocates funds to specific organizations from funds budgeted and other charges, public agency appropriations in the 2020 Riverfront Development Special Revenue Fund. This is the money that was originally $75,000 for the, uh, Shreveport, Bossier African-American Chamber of Commerce.
Mr. Minister, so moved for the adoption of 170.
Councilman Bradford, can I, can I, can I make a-
I haven't gotten a second yet.
Second?
I'm sorry. I want, uh, no, we have somebody from the African-American Chamber that, that want to speak if that's okay with you.
Uh-huh. Yes.
And as he, as he coming, I, I received a phone call from Dr. Cox that you all had worked out an agreement, uh, 50/50?
Yeah, that's what he's about to speak. I, so I'll just tell you my posture, and that my posture remains the same as it was when we did the, the, um, budget, the budget meeting, is that I don't want to determine it. I think that the two, uh, entities should be the ones to determine it, so, uh, I believe that's what Darren Dixon is about to speak on. That's all I'm doing.
Good afternoon, uh, and thank you for allowing me to speak. Uh, exactly, uh, I guess, uh, Councilman Green stole my thunder, but that's exactly what I was arriving to say.
You in my district, don't, don't count again.
No, you know, I love you. But anyway, uh, we did have the, uh, opportunity to, uh, to come together and, and decide how we wanted to split it, and we did, uh, decide on a, a 50/50 split.
How we even got to 50/50?
Yeah. Well, uh, we, 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 how did we get to 50/50?
Yeah, it was 75, so how we get to 7, until we get to 50/50?
Well, uh, we didn't want it to be, uh, in going back and forth with each other because both organizations do work together, so we wanted to do something that was amenable, uh, Councilman Bowman, and that was, uh, agreeable to both organizations.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman? Council. And I appreciate your comments.
Yeah, thanks.
But the decision on the, on the split is not yours, it's just council's.
I understand, I'm, I'm just asking, I'm just letting you-
And I appreciate you all getting together, but when I look at funding anything, you look at what's, what's the, what's the benefit? What, what, what are we receiving for, for the, for the allocation that we are wanting? How do you, how do you see one, 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 one organization benefiting, the city benefiting How do you, how do you see one organization benefiting, the city benefiting versus the others?
Well, I'll say this, speaking, and of course, you know, Councilman Bradford, that I'm on both boards, and I think both organizations have a benefit to the city. Both have different missions, of course, but both have benefited the city. And so that's, that's why I'm glad we had the opportunity to talk. Of course, it is your decision, but I just wanted to let you all know that we did come together to talk about it and define an amicable resolution to this, this issue.
So, Mayor?
Counselor?
I mean, I presented, this was discussed long before they met and compromised. So, and the council lady was firstly to bring the attention of what, how we need to allocate this, and I supported her on that. And I, once we removed these from, at the last meeting, I took up the mantle and said, okay, I can agree with this split. So it was your initial legislation. What is your position on the compromise that they made?
Yeah, so my initial recommendation was seventy-five as we put into the budget.
Yes.
But as, you know, they came up, they talked more about it, because I only went on the documentation that was provided. And I needed to see programming and a bunch of other things to where we weren't completely funding an organization because we just don't have that type of funding. So when they gave, when they came to speak, the story changed, and I said, you know, everybody's deserving of this, and I think I just deferred to the organizations to figure out how they split. I didn't know about yourself and Councilwoman's negotiations, and, I mean, you already made the point, this will be your decision. I just wanted to allow them to, you know, speak on their behalf. So I have no, I have no, no, I have no preference on how this is determined because this is your legislation. I'm trying to see why the split, though. I mean, why, why the change and why not the split?
Well, Mr. Mayor, from my understanding, Dr. Cox called me and said that they had a meeting with you on last Thursday.
They did.
And when they left your office, the agreement was fifty-fifty.
Yeah, so they left my office and the agreement was, I will let you all determine where, and wherever you all determine the numbers are, I will support that. That was mine. So again, me calling Mr. Dixon up was a, was me supporting, hey, letting their voice be heard in this legislation, but it's not my legislation, so.
To answer, to answer your question is that I didn't, I didn't get the memo random about a meeting at the mayor's office and a split, okay? My proposal was, my proposal, now, if somebody offered an amendment, amendment is not in the equation right now. If the amendment was made, then I think we could, we could be prudent in addressing this split.
I offer a substitute motion for, I go back to the fifty-fifty split that was agreed upon on both organizations.
So both, I just want to make it clear, MSI agrees with the split as well.
They did.
Good?
Mr. Chairman? We have a technical issue. We didn't know about that, and it has to be in writing, has to be an amendment to the resolution.
We could put it in writing and postpone.
Okay.
I don't, if we just postpone until the end, that'll be...
I'm ready to vote now.
I'm sorry.
I'm ready to vote now.
That's, that's, okay, that's two of y'all, maybe three of y'all ready to vote now.
No, no, to postpone, it would take a vote to postpone, but that's, that's what she's saying. She says she ready to vote now. I'm sorry?
I guess one of my concerns is that we have such a strange way of appropriating funds.
I agree.
And it's unclear. And if there have been agreements or that have been made prior and standing arrangements for funding that are going to be changed, I guess there should probably be a little bit more transparency in how we go about that so that it's clear why we're reallocating funds in a different way and why the information wasn't available to you before you were expected to start making decisions. That means that, and this goes back to something you said our last meeting, Chairman, about people being wrong and showing fascism.
I feel that way.
I feel that way about the other side of it, too. Just to make that perfectly clear.
Well, let's make it clear then, woman, because it's evident. It's very evident, and some people don't want to talk about some of the money, and some people want to talk about, and feel like there's more money on one side, who just need to go ahead and tell it like it is.
From the clerk.
We just need to, no, we need to call it like it is.
Now, the point of order from the clerk is that...
I understand some of y'all feel like there's not enough money, or there's little money, or what and whatnot. I look at every dime that come through here.
The point of order from the clerk is that it needs to be, if there's amendment made, it need to be in writing, and how do we address that? The clerk, I think I heard somebody say that we can postpone this to the end of the meeting and let it get in writing, and then deal with it, or we can postpone until the next meeting.
I'll move to postpone.
I will, until the end of the meeting.
Until the end of the meeting.
Finally?
Yes, sir.
I'll second that motion.
Until the end of the meeting?
Yes, sir.
Until the end of the meeting.
All right.
Moved by the vice chair and second by Councilman Butcher to postpone to the end of the meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Butcher?
Just, just...
That motion carries six to one.
I think that the process has been a little bit flawed, but I'm glad to see that the two sides worked it out. And when you've got both sides saying this is the way that they want to work it out, I think that we need to honor that. I hope next year, maybe we can do it a little bit differently, but right now, I think you've got both, both parties that say fifty-fifty, and I know, it's not my money, I'm not going to be using it. I mean, it is my money, but, you know, but I'm not the one that's going to be using it. So if the African-American Chamber and MSI can use it together and work together to meet their goals, then I'm, I'm for doing the fifty-fifty.
I appreciate that, Councilman.
What are the date?
Uh, great.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bowman?
I thought it was fifty-fifty.
No, no, it's...
Thirty-seven thousand per.
Thirty, thirty-seven five.
My apologies, I read it wrong.
Yeah. There's no additional funds.
No additional money, just split it in half.
You, you okay with that, Ms. Flory? Mine's got fifty thousand, fifty thousand on my, that ain't no, I'm bad in math, but that ain't fifty-fifty there.
He's right, he's not hallucinating. That's what it says.
Fifty thousand American...
They say reduce it by fifty.
By fifty thousand, so it'd be twenty-five. The amendment's on the table.
Oh, yeah.
Seventy-five thousand.
It's reducing by that.
Twenty-five, MSI. Fifty, MSI, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Flory, the, what you see on the, on that screen is not what the amendment is. She's going upstairs now to prepare a new amendment. We didn't know about that, so we didn't prepare it.
I got you.
Okay.
Okay. I'll, I'll sit back and be quiet.
All right. Mr. Bowman, is 171 to be withdrawn?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
Okay, so 171 is withdrawn. We're now on the introduction of resolutions. We have one, Resolution 172.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment before we switch to the next resolution? Yes, Sir, Mayor Perkins, I'm sorry. Yeah, you, you cutting it, Council.
I'm sorry.
Because you're meeting, so I defer to it. We, Councilwoman Fuller, I want to make a point to what you said, and I made these comments during budget meeting as well. We set a criteria when, well, the belt is tightening on the city's budget period, right? We had to do five percent cuts across the board, so this funding that we give to nonprofit organizations, we are very, very diligent with the way in which we spend it. So we requested documents from all organizations. They were able to submit documents on their financing, who all contribute to the organization program, and there's just a few kind of requests for information that we put out. And we heard with the information that we gathered, that's what, that's the reason why we proposed the budget in the manner that we did. I agree that this can be uniform. I don't mind publishing our standards for the future, considering that the money is going to potentially get tighter as we build our reserve back up. But again, I am requiring information, and we do have to see activity out of these organizations and the fact that the city itself isn't completely funding organizations going forward, or we'll be, I don't think we'll be spending money in a very responsible way.
Thank you, Mayor.
We're now under introduction of resolutions. Do we have a motion and a second? Do we have one?
I so move for introduction.
Second.
We're now under introduction of ordinances. Ordinance 191 amends various articles and sections in the Unified Development Code. Ordinance 192 amends various articles and sections in the Unified Development Code. Ordinance 193 is a zoning matter, case number nineteen dash four-four-one dash C. It amends the, it rezones property located on East Corner of Pickett Street and Fairfield Avenue from RUC Urban Core Residential District to C3 General Commercial District. Ordinance 194 is a zoning matter. It rezones property located on Southeast Corner of Carroll Street and Yuri Drive from R17 Single Family Residential District to C2 Corridor Commercial District. And ordinance 195 is a zoning matter. It rezones property located on North Side of Bert Coon's Industrial Loop, approximately nine hundred and twenty-five feet east of the Kingston Road intersection from C2 Corridor Commercial District to C4 Heavy Commercial District.
Move for introduction.
Second.
We're now under ordinances on second reading and final passage.
Mr. Clerk?
Yes.
I'm wondering if these ordinances meet the layover criteria.
Yes, it'll be more than two weeks. The ones that we about to do now? Some of them do and some of them don't.
Okay.
Some of them were postponed from last meeting, if you recall.
So you, you got, you have those identified?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Ordinance 161 amends Chapter 10, Article 4, Division 2, Section 10 dash 175 of the Code of Ordinances regarding hours of operation for retail dealers of alcohol. There is one amendment, it's Amendment 1A to ordinance 161. It's not the one on your screen, but it's 1A that was passed out. So we can take that up. You remember that, that was on, that has been on the agenda for some time.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, several members have expressed a desire to discuss this further, and so I will move to postpone. I do hope we can have a final vote at our next meeting.
Second?
All right.
What's motion?
To postpone 161.
We got to let people be happy for the, for the new year. Yes, sir, I'm sorry, Councilman.
Yeah, I thank you, Councilman Nickson, for postponing this. I'm not a drinker, but I got some of my cousins asked that we could just hold this off until the first of the year.
If I'm going to be the... Pastor Green, I guess I wait till the new year.
So I'm just looking out for them. I'm not against it, I just, my cousins, I told them that I would, and so, thank you so much.
Yes, sir, of course, thank you.
But I would like some of the egg and not the no.
All right, I'm sorry, this was postponed. It was motion by Councilman, Councilman Nickson and second by Councilman Green. That motion carries with seven.
Got to compromise again.
Ordinance 172 amends a 2019 budget for the general fund. This concerns a fire department's budget.
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Councilman Green, second by Councilman Bradford on 172. Please vote. Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance 173 amends a 2019 airport enterprise fund.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Green and second by Councilman Butcher. Please vote. Motion carries with seven, Mr. Thompson.
Ordinance 174 amends a 2019 capital improvements budget. This concerns an airport project.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Green and second by Councilman Butcher. Please vote. And that motion carries with seven, Mr. Thompson.
Ordinance 175 amends a 2019 capital improvements budget.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Green and second by Councilman Butcher. On 175, please vote. That motion carries with seven, Mr. Thompson.
Ordinance 176 amends a 2019 grant special revenue fund.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Green and second by the chair. There's no discussion, please vote. And that motion carries with seven, Mr. Thompson.
Ordinance 177 amends a 2019 Community Development Special Revenue Fund budget. There are two amendments. Amendment number one, this amendment more accurately corrects balance and fund to meet the changes needed to comply with the Local Government Control Act.
So moved on amendment.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Green and second by Councilwoman Fuller on the amendment. Motion carries with seven.
Amendment number two, our transfers twenty-five thousand dollars to the Community Development Special Revenue Fund, providing matching funds for the Financial Empowerment Center.
So moved on amendment.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Green and second by Councilwoman Fuller. That's on amendment two, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. Motion carries with seven.
And so moved on the ordinance as amendment.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Green and second by Councilwoman Fuller as amendment. Please vote. And that motion carries with seven.
Ordinance 178 amends a 2019 downtown entertainment economic development area special revenue fund budget. There is one amendment, the amendment more accurately corrects balance and fund to meet the changes needed to comply with the Local Government Control Act.
So moved on the amendment.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Fuller and second by Councilman Green. If there's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with six.
The ordinances amended.
So moved on the ordinances amendment.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Green and second by Councilwoman Fuller as amendment. Please vote. And motion carries with six.
Ordinance 179 amends a 2019 Riverfront Development Special Revenue Fund budget. There's one amendment, the amendment transfers twenty-five thousand dollars to Community Development, providing matching funds for the Financial Empowerment Center.
So moved on the amendment.
Second?
Second by Councilman Bradford. Moved by Councilman Green, I'm sorry. Motion by Councilman Green and second by Councilman Bradford.
So...
And that motion carries with seven.
So moved on the ordinances amendment.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Green and second by Councilman Bradford. Please vote. Motion carries with seven, Mr. Thompson.
Ordinance 189 and 190 need to be postponed until January the fourteenth.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Green and second by Councilwoman Fuller. Postpone. Please vote. And that motion carries with seven.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, we have an amendment to the resolution that we previously postponed until the end of the meeting. In the now therefore be it resolved clause, we made the changes throughout the amendment, but in the now therefore be it resolved clause by the City Council of the City of Freeport, that the seventy-five thousand dollars budgeted in the other charges carried out of the Riverfront Development Special Revenue Fund in the public agency subs, object shall be allocated as follows. Reduce the seventy-five thousand dollar allocation for the Freeport-Bosia African-American Chamber of Commerce by thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars, and fund minority supply institute by thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars.
That's an amendment.
That's the amendment.
So moved on amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by the chair and second by Councilman Green.
Mr. Chairman, I want to make sure that I understood the comments of the representative of the chamber correctly. He said he, he didn't want more than half, that everybody agreed to have.
They agreed to have.
They agreed to have. That's what everybody wants.
Ain't what they want, but that's what they agreed to, so we going with that.
I mean, I think they both did like that, so...
Yeah, they agreed. And that motion carries with five.
So moved on the ordinances amendment.
Second. Moved by Councilman Green and second by the chair. If there's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with six.
Mr. Chairman, those are all... Mr. Chairman, those are all of the ordinances, all of the legislation on the regular agenda.
Okay. What about this table? Okay, that's some...
I don't believe it's ready to be removed.
It's not ready, it's, okay. We have no appeals, any appeals? Am I correct, Mr. Thompson?
No, sir.
All right. Are there any reports from office of board and committee? And, Mr. Mayor Perkins, do you have an additional communication?
I have no communications, Chairman.
No whatsoever. How about any council member, any additional communications? Yes, Mr. Councilman James Costa-Green?
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to just wish all of you a Merry Christmas, and we're just about at a year, and I just appreciate all of you, and certainly we've accomplished a lot, and mayor, to your administration, you all have done a lot, and I commend you all. Also to our council staff, who makes this happen and make us look like we're geniuses up here. I'd just like to commend you all for your work, and all of the city workers, and I'd just like to wish all of you a great Merry Christmas, and it's okay to say Merry Christmas, and also, we'd just like to say Merry Christmas to all of the constituents in District F. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Councilman Green.
Thank Councilman Butcher for the dessert.
I'm, I'm...
As a courtesy of Councilman Butcher.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm ask you to, I'm ask you to show me how much you appreciate me, so, don't tell me, show me what I've been told.
I just made you some cups, man.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, we'll talk about that later.
I made you three pairs.
We'll talk about it later, Dan, I appreciate you. I just, you're right.
Yeah, look at me. That's a son, that's a son.
Executive session is zero, and if there is nothing else...